Good evening. This is the Town of Eastchester Planning Board Meeting of May 22, 2025. If everyone would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
We're just going to take attendance. Mr. Phil Nemisak.
Present.
Lauren Goodrich.
Present.
Jim Bonano's here. Joseph Rabino.
Present.
Michael Fortuna.
Present.
Great, full house. So, we're just going to approve minutes right now. So, I make a motion to approve the minutes from April 24, 2025 Planning Board Meeting, subject to Phil Nemisak's revisions in his email dated 5/22/25, so we can all vote except for Joe, I think, right?
Second.
Except Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. The, um, let's see. So, the applications we're going to go over tonight are, the first one is 24-41, 30 and 32 Locust Avenue. The second one is application 2512, Pure Physique Scarsdale, 74 Garth. The next application is actually three individual special permits at the old Lord &amp; Taylor's on 750 White Plains Road. One of them will be Lord &amp; Taylor, the other will be Equinox, the third will be Kava Restaurant, and the last will be Tate Bakery. So, we're going to review those together since the applications are similar. The fourth application is 2522, 10 Hewitt Avenue subdivision, and, let's see, and there's one other item on Marble Dale Road. That's application 2518 to 10 Marble Dale Road subdivision. And another procedural application we have to go over is 23-15 Sal's Market and Pizzeria, 751 White Plains Road. Cool. Oh, yeah, hold on a second. So, these applications have been adjourned and will not be heard tonight. That is 23-15 Sal's Market and Pizzeria, obviously, and 25-27 10 Joyce Road. These are maybe on the agenda on June 26, 2025. Okay. That being said, the first application is 24-41, 30 and 32 Locust Avenue.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Benedict Salanietro, on behalf of the application for 3032 Locust Avenue, in the interest of time, since I occupied a lot of it last month, unless the board has any questions, the last iteration of plans, in concert with consultation with your consultant, I think have yielded a very positive result. So, unless the board has any questions, or if you want an overview of what has been done since the last meeting, it's up to you.
A brief summary of what has been done?
Sure. Absolutely. So, the last meeting, we reviewed the plans as it relates to improvements for the single-family dwelling and drainage, how to handle that. These plans have now been focused on infiltration means and methods to handle the impervious areas. Drainage will be in the front through percolation of the soil. We have retaining walls where one-third of the property in the front will be elevated so that it can accommodate the practices. There were a number of notes, or questions, I should say, comments that have also been answered from the last memorandum. So, it's pretty much the same plan. We introduced two additional notations for the board to, and we spent a lot of time talking about the unidentified pipe that was discovered. A notation's been on the plan referring to that. We also included a future pipe that is there for the purposes of future easement through the adjoining properties if needed. We have done some investigation since our last meeting with assistance from the Town Highway Department, and we don't, we haven't concluded positively certain things that we were commenting on last month. There is a pipe there. It does connect to the sewer. We don't know its origin at this point. The town's camera system was too large to fit into the pipe, and there needs to be some coordination with the neighbor to go access their property, to do dye testing and other things like that, but we're going to get to that point. All of this work is, the rare most portion of the property does not influence one way or another on the proposal for the construction of the single-family dwelling. So, but I think, I think KSCJ's memo also concluded the same elements that we're just talking about now.
Great. Right, you're referring to their memo dated May 22nd, in which I imagine you authored that. Can you just give us your summary also, please?
Good evening. Rick Bolander, KSCJ. We whittled the memorandum down just to, you know, kind of consolidate, clean it up a little bit. The remaining comments are very minor comments. It's crossing the Ts and dotting the Is for the stormwater design, but it's there. Now, it's just refining that. We had spoken with the building inspector about the pipe that's bisecting the site. We assumed there's a drain inlet in the driveway of 34 Locust that's collecting roof runoff from the, from the house. We assumed that that was, the pipe bisecting 32 was the outlet for that, which was not the case. So, the mystery still remains about where that pipe is coming from, but we're working with the town and with the applicant to figure that out.
Great.
But other than that, I mean, it's...
Yeah, we're not going to go down a rabbit hole here. We're just going to stick to...
Yep.
This is broken into stormwater and existing utilities. I'm going to say stormwater has been addressed adequately.
Yes, correct.
And you're going to figure out existing utilities and all those pipes when you probe more and figure it out. I don't think...
No.
I don't need to know anymore. I'd love to take time, but I think we took enough time last meeting.
Yeah, we would just, suggest a condition to have that rear pipe exposed whenever excavation is going on on the property, just so that we can get whatever information that might reveal. And also with regard to whatever stormwater facility is capturing stormwater from off-site, if that's uncovered during the course of excavation, that we might want to reconsider, you know, we may need to come back and reconsider things if it's to remain, if it's to be removed, then you don't have to think about it again, but...
We're not going to do the what-ifs. We're just going to stick to, you wrote the memo, we agree with it, let's move forward.
Correct.
Gentlemen, board members, any further explanations necessary?
Yeah. The one thing I wanted to make sure is that this giant red herring has no direct impact on the findings that, you know, the application and the way it's presented complies with what we need it to comply with.
It does. Everything complies.
That's, alright, good.
No direct impact, other than, you know, we were worried that the construction would disrupt it, but they're really not proposing anything in that area, so they wouldn't be directly disturbed due to the construction.
Okay. So, I think the suggestion you made, the condition, adding that condition is a very sensible one.
What exactly is that condition? That based on your findings, it will be adjusted accordingly?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
And that the pipe is exposed when they're excavating the site?
Yeah. Okay. Great. So, this is still a public hearing, so let me just see if there's any comments from the public regarding this application. 30 and 32 Locust. So, then I make a motion to close the public hearing in this application. 2441, 30 and 32 Locust Avenue.
Second.
Excuse me. All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Then, just because it's been a while since we had the very initial presentation on this application, just a reminder that the applicant did submit a complete landscape plan for the property. A typical condition that we would require is that before a certificate of occupancy is issued, a landscape architect certifies that the landscaping was done in accordance with that plan, and we saw the architectural plans and the Architectural Review Board recommended in favor of the application with a couple of modifications that were made before the submission to your board.
Okay. I'm good. So, subject to condition, the first condition we discussed before, and the submittal of a landscape plan, and confirmation is done accordingly, I make a motion to approve this application, 2441, 30 and 32 Locust.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You made it.
Thank you. Happy Memorial Day.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. The next application is 2512, Pure Physique in Scarsdale, 74 Garth.
Good evening. Pat Carlommy here, on behalf of Pure Physique Scarsdale, 74 Garth Road. I'm here back again to talk about the request for indoor recreational facilities, 74 Garth Road. We went to the zoning board for the variances that we needed for some setbacks, for time, and for parking. All the variances were granted with some conditions. I think you've reviewed the conditions that they granted, and we're here looking to hopefully get a special permit approved.
Let's see. I truly don't remember when you came here previously, probably because I wasn't here.
Yeah.
I don't remember. But you guys, all the conditions on Garth were pretty much the same, right?
Yes.
All the parking and all the other crazy variances that you need, right?
Sure. So, the variances were from the setback to the lot line because there's no, you know, essentially no setback. There's no onsite parking for this existing tenant space, and the applicant is seeking hours of operation that are different than the hours of operation permitted by the zoning law. They'd like to operate a little bit earlier in the morning, which the Zoning Board of Appeals is actually in favor of because that mitigates some of the parking to have clients coming that early before parking is at its full utilization on Garth Road. So, the variances were granted, subject to conditions that the applicant used best efforts to get parking permits for employees, and that the variance was granted based on the nature of this use as a one-on-one or small group training by appointment only, and that if the nature or size of the use changes, modifications to the approvals are needed.
Yeah, and it's a total of six clients they gave us, and one trainer, so seven people at a time, which we're perfectly fine with. That's exactly what we're looking for.
Sure.
We've accepted those. And I gave you some pictures of the property, so you could see them from...
Yeah. Yes, thank you for preparing that. Just from my recollection, what are the hours of operation?
6:00 AM to usually 7:00 PM, but it's an appointment-based program, so it'll be only when there's classes that are built online beforehand. So, there might not be morning class, there might not be evening class, there might not be middle classes, all depends on how many members we have.
And I think the last time you were here, we discussed the issue of getting parking permits...
Yes.
...for your employees, because I believe the parking permits in the nearby garage were linked to a specific license plate.
Correct.
So, it wouldn't, wouldn't really work for users of the gym, your clientele, who would be coming maybe periodically. But have you followed up on that? Because I guess as one of the conditions, is this going to happen? Is it something that you foresee happening?
Yeah, so basically what the zoning board said and that we agreed with was, for trainers and for employees, we're going to get, we're going to make our best efforts to get them the parking permits, but yes, for people coming and members coming, it's based on license plate, and there, we couldn't either get a spot for the business. They said that wouldn't happen, it's based on registration, then license plate, so there's no way that they could, would allow us to get parking.
Okay. But I think that's a good accommodation.
Yes.
Is that a condition, or it's already been decided that that's done?
Yeah, that was a condition of the variance, and we would recommend making it a condition of the special permit as well, having them near each other.
Yeah. Best efforts is kind of a loose term, but...
Right.
But it's, you know, I think the reality is, you can't control everything, right?
Correct.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Let me just see if there's any comments from the public. So, I make a motion to open the public hearing on application 2512, Pure Physique Scarsdale, 74 Garth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No?
Was this opened before, or...
Yes.
Oh, sorry. It's continuing, alright, so...
Reopen. I don't know.
Strike that reopen, but I'm not going to redo that, but I am going to make a motion to close the public hearing on the application, Pure Physique Scarsdale, 74 Garth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jolly good. So, the only condition, I guess, is about that parking and the permits, subject to that condition. Are there any...
I have conditions I could read if you like?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay, so the first would be, the applicant shall use best efforts to secure parking permits in nearby municipal lots for employees of the business. The second condition would be, the applicant has represented that the proposed facility will be a personalized fitness center, where all training sessions are by appointment only, with a maximum of six clients and a trainer using the facility at any given time. The analysis as to the special permit, particularly with regard to the provision of off-street parking, was based on these representations. Therefore, the use of the facility in a manner other than as described in this condition, or the expansion of the facility into additional space, will be a violation of the special permit. No changes in the operation of the use that would increase the scope of the use beyond that described in this condition, and the materials submitted in support of this application may be undertaken unless a modification to this approval is granted by the planning board. And then our typical, this approval authorizes the applicant to undertake only the activities specifically depicted on the plan, submitted for and reviewed at this meeting, in accordance with this resolution of approval. Any changes or modifications require approval from the planning board.
Thank you. I found it here. Better you read it than me, it sounded better. So, subject to those conditions, I make a motion to, close the, I make a motion to approve application 2512, Pure Physique Scarsdale.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good Memorial Day.
Great.
Good luck.
The next application is a combination of four separate applications, which I stated at the beginning, 2524, 2528, 2529, 2530. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Bob Davis of Singleton Davis in Singleton. We're the attorneys for LT Eastchester LLC, the applicant and owner of the shopping center at 750 White Plains Road, formerly occupied, as you know, by Lord &amp; Taylor. We're here tonight to seek your board's site plan and architectural approval for certain exterior renovations and site improvements for which we've recently received approval from the ARB at its May 1st meeting, and also for special permits for three of the new tenants that we'll talk about tonight. The background of the application is set forth in detail in my letter to the board of May 6th, which also had attached to it my letter to the ARB of April 14th, which has a lot of background as well. With me tonight are members of our project team, Jerry Birmingham, who's Senior Vice President for Development of Saks Global, and his colleagues from Saks. Also, hopefully, on his way very shortly is Diego Villarreal from JMC, our Planning and Engineering Consultants. He's attending, I believe his daughter's being elevated into Honor Society in Somers tonight, so he's going to get here hopefully by 7:30. We also have from our architects Highland Associates, Michaela Jacomoza is here to take you through the facade renovations primarily. We also have here to answer any questions and to give a brief discussion, representatives of our three special permit tenants, Luba Senatorova from Equinox, Brendan Boyle from Tate Bakery and Cafe, and Molly Nostrand from Kava Restaurants. As you know, since the closure of Lord &amp; Taylor a few years ago, the applicant has been in the process of revitalizing the center for its adaptive reuse with significant renovations already to the 215,000 square foot building and numerous site improvements. In July of 2021, your board approved the initial renovations and site work, and that resulted ultimately in the tenancy of Saks Off Fifth, a retailer which is occupying over 37,000 square feet of space. And then subsequently, in September of 2022 and March of 2024, the board approved additional modifications to permit the occupancy by White Plains Hospital of a cumulative amount of 75,000 square feet of medical office space, which is now under construction, and I understand that's expected to be, you know, completed by the end of the summer. So, this application seeks your board's further approval of additional renovations and site work to accommodate five additional new tenants who will occupy a total of 56,000 additional square feet. Two of the five new tenants will be nationally-known retailers, Williams Sonoma and Pottery Barn Kids. Their uses are permitted as of right at the site, and they are in accordance with the board's comprehensive 2021 resolution. Two of the other three new tenants are well-known national chains, which fall under the formula fast casual slash quick casual restaurant use category in the zoning code, which is allowed in this DSC district by special permit pursuant to sections 2D and 12H22 of the code. One of the restaurants, Kava, has 17 locations in New York State, including one in Ry Ridge Plaza and one upcoming in Cross County Center. It's a very popular fast casual establishment known for its Mediterranean-inspired fare with a focus on hospitality and community. A second restaurant with a similar focus is Tate Bakery and Cafe, which has 27 locations in Massachusetts and others in Virginia, Washington DC, and Maryland, and Tate is in the process of opening new locations in our tri-state area, including one recently in Ridgewood, New Jersey. Tate features breakfast, lunch, and brunch items and its famous pastries. Neither restaurant will serve alcoholic beverages, and neither is proposing outdoor dining. The third of the three tenants requiring a special permit is well-known to the town. That's the Equinox Club, which has operated for many years, I believe since 1999, at 800 White Plains Road, just up the road from the shopping center. Equinox is a health and fitness facility under the code, and that's one of the enumerated principal uses falling under the rubric of a recreation and family entertainment facility indoor, which is a special permit use, as you know, under section 12H19 of the code. The applicant's planning consultants, JMC, have submitted summaries of the three special permit uses and their compliance with the requirements of section 2D and 12 of the zoning code, as may be applicable. However, I want to note that if there's been one change to the Equinox application, upon discussions with board's counsel and review of her recent memo comment regarding Equinox, tonight we are hereby amending the Equinox special permit application simply to comply with the hours of operation requirement. You've heard about a variance for that and granted an amended, granted a permit for the prior applicant. So, we are amending our application to comply with the hours of operation under subsection 19F, of course, with the understanding that Equinox, like anyone else, may later come to the board if it's so inclined, and seek a variance likewise, and an amended special permit for different hours in accordance with the procedures of section 12C7 of your code. So, at this point, I'm not sure if Mr. Diego is here yet. It doesn't appear he is. So, I would like to turn over the mic briefly to Jerry Birmingham of Saks to give you a further update on what's going on with the center and where we're going tonight.
If I could ask a question, with the five new tenants...
Yes.
...that would be envisioned here, added to the White Plains Hospital and Saks Off Fifth, or whatever it is, what would the total occupancy, the percentage occupancy be of the facility?
Well, the occupancy then will be thirty, about 37,000 square feet for Saks, about 75,000 square feet for the hospital, so that brings us up to 112,000, and then 56,000 for these five tenants approximately, which brings us up to 168,000, if my math is correct at this time of night, but I think Mr. Birmingham can speak...
Okay.
...as well.
My name is Gerald Birmingham. I'm with Saks Global, the owners of the property. As, I think Bob did a terrific job, so I don't have a lot to fill in there, except to give you a status on what's going on, give you the answers to the occupancies, the kind of timing we're looking at, so...
Yeah, and just also tell me, Saks Global, how does Saks Global relate to LT Eastchester LLC?
We are the owners of that entity. So, Saks Global is the new name of the Lord &amp; Taylor entity that owned the real estate that was part of Saks Fifth Avenue, which then in December purchased Neiman Marcus with Bergdorf Goodman. It's now consolidated under the same private ownership and is renamed Saks Global.
Got it. So, Saks Global is a parent of, or probably, is it a member of LT Eastchester LLC?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Thank you. So, currently, as you know, Saks Off Fifth is open and operating, and we're going to continue to operate that store as it is, with some minor changes that we've done with the stockroom, et cetera, to build what is an elevator tower inside the building in order to provide access from the east side of the building to the third floor, which is currently vacant, not leased. We expect maybe the hospital will take it for administrative purposes, but that's one of the vacant spaces. Now, there'll be an elevator tower. You come in from the east side, and our difficulty with leasing the entirety of a complex that used to be a department store, someone could come in any old door, you could load at the same spot. It all operates fine for a single tenant. For multiple tenants, it has to revert to some of the things it used to be 20 years ago. It's not going to be Sam Goody's, but it'll be multiple stores along that southern front, et cetera. But that parking situation is one where we wanted to try and create better access to the east side to utilize the larger lot. So, that's the purpose of the tower we approved, and the reason the access will be there for the third floor from that location, opening at the same time as the second phase of the hospital. The first phase of the hospital is a July 1 opening, and they'll start in June, going through the permit approval through Building Department. It's come along, it's beautiful. In a couple of weeks, it's worth each of you going down there and taking a look at it. We're really pleased with what is a huge investment financially and in time to build out medical space. It has a lot of regulatory issues and a lot of expensive stuff, including MRIs, et cetera. We'll have a full service there, except for ambulatory. So, with that, the next step we took was in leasing to the Health Club, Equinox. The situation created is a duplex with the entrance, again, on the east side with the large parking lot. So, Equinox clients will not be coming in off the lot that faces White Plains Road. They'll all be coming in from the other side, and accomplishing that makes the mix of the tenants that are looking for the special permits today for restaurant use to have better implementation of that existing lot. We will, upon approval here, be moving forward with application for building permits on five tenants for what will be basically the remainder of the building with the exception of the third floor, and there's a garage area that was used as a garage that could be converted to retail, that we would hope to accomplish that. There's been interest in different kind of uses for it, and I think once the hospital opens, there'll be a lot of people who want to be by their entrance.
That's where the loading dock was, or...
Right of the loading dock, as you're facing it.
Okay.
Right next to their new east entrance. On either side, there's like this painted brown slats and some islands, and it was, it's an active garage, except nobody's using it, so not so active.
An active, non-active garage.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that gives you an overall picture of what we tried to accomplish. We're happy with having the progress that we've had, never quick enough, but we've kept this all within the envelope of the existing building without having to create a situation, as many of the tenants would have liked, to change things up or create what might be considered other problems, so that we relied upon what was granted in 2021 for some minor renovations, improvements, changing the windowscape, but keeping kind of the feel and look of that existing building, which we've been able to maintain, and which you'll see from the ARB's approval, is primarily similar... you'll see from the ARB's approval, is primarily similar or the same facades, just complemented with some additions to it.
Yeah, I have a couple of quick questions.
Go ahead.
First is a follow-up to my earlier question. It sounds like if the application is granted in full.
Yeah.
That the only space that would be left vacant at the moment, the only significant space, you mentioned the active, non-active garage. Apart from that, it's this third floor space, which is probably not the most desirable space for any type of interactive, it maybe, as you said, maybe better utilized as office space for something like a hospital.
Administration, architecture, engineering, municipal offices.
What percentage of the overall square footage is that remaining space?
It's less than ten percent.
Got it, okay. And the other question relates to Equinox. Is Equinox envisioning moving its facility, I assume, the entire facility, not going to operate out of two places?
Correct. They're closing the other one upon opening this one.
Because I know parking was always a major issue.
They came over to take a look, and they couldn't stop staring at that big, open parking lot and saying, this would work.
That is, well, parking always comes up as an issue in virtually every part of the town in which someone wants to operate a business. I've always felt that that, the old Lord &amp; Taylor parking lot, particularly that east lot, is as vast a lot as you get in this town.
Right.
So I can see the allure to it.
Perfect to teach your kids where to learn how to drive.
I've done that, yeah.
It's also going to benefit traffic because Equinox is always backed up, the existing one, when people try and get into the lot.
Yep.
You know, which ruined traffic, so this.
Yes, that whole, the intersection and the interactions of those three traffic signals.
Yeah, that's ideal. Okay, I think your architect is here?
Yes, we have our architect and our engineer.
And we have Diego. We can start with him.
Thank you. We'll listen and then come back.
Yeah, any questions, I'm.
Thank you.
You promised him by seven thirty, and he was in the door by seven twenty-seven. I saw it. Very well done.
Congratulations to your daughter.
Yes.
The timing worked perfectly. Apologies for being late this evening, but thank you. Again, just for the record, Diego Villarreali with JMC, we're the planning and engineering consultant working on behalf of the applicants. And we've had the opportunity of working with them for the last several years, obviously, with this overall project. We were here before this board, representing them when they came initially with all of the improvements that were constructed to date. So we have a long history, know a lot of the nuance that we've been working with them on, and obviously, this is just the next step in the reoccupation of this building and bringing it and revitalizing the overall property. Just a quick overview on the property itself, as I'm sure Bob has alluded to this, but I might repeat a couple of things, but try to move quickly. Obviously, it's an eleven-acre property with frontages on the two roadways, White Plains Road, New Elmont Road, the existing building, about two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand square feet. And the topography is interesting. We all know, I know you know the property well, the front of the building sits at one elevation, the back of it drops down, and it plays a role in how the parking is situated and broken up apart throughout the property itself. The access points, there are several access points throughout, both on White Plains Road and New Elmont Road, all of which are remaining the same as part of this project. As Bob alluded to, we're really here for four applications this evening. The first one being the site plan application for the limited amount of improvements that are being constructed, and then as well as the three special permit applications, two for the food use and one for the Equinox or the Health and Fitness Center. So first, we're going to start just quickly with the site plan application. And as I spoke about before, there's been a significant number of improvements that have been constructed to date. When we were back before the US Board several years ago, it really focused on the overall property. We did a number of sidewalk improvements. There was a significant amount of landscaped islands that were installed throughout the property. Working with the traffic engineer, we made some modifications to the, to some of the islands to more channelized traffic. All of those things have been implemented and are shown on the site plan. And that, again, did, it was a nice facelift to the property, provided some new landscaping throughout those massive parking spaces. There's been landscaped islands that have been incorporated throughout, so that all has been done. As part of this application with the new tenants, it's really limited from a site plan standpoint that needs to, the work that needs to be done. Along the White Plains Road frontage, where the main entrances of these new tenants are going to be located, the sidewalk was redone, but there's some additional sidewalk work that's needed to meet the floor elevations that occur along that frontage. The stairs that are there on the right-hand side of the building, that's being removed. And then the new doorways are put into each of those tenant locations, so we have some sidewalk modifications and some new sidewalk that's being constructed. In addition to that, there's a ramp and a stair that's being done to enter one of the tenant locations as well. So again, it's really minor from a sidewalk improvement standpoint, but it still obviously requires a site plan because of the changes that were being made. I heard the discussion regarding the trash enclosure in the rear as well. There is a new compactor that's being installed in the rear, but it's fully enclosed. It's kind of tucked into this nice little niche in the back portion. There's the existing retaining wall because of that grade change. As you come down from the front to the back, there's the retaining wall that's on that side of the property, and that compactor's tucked nicely right into that corner. And then there's an enclosure that's being built around it as well to help screen the enclosure itself. There are no changes being made to site circulation, all of which will remain the same. There's no parking spaces. That is being eliminated as part of the improvements that are being constructed. So it's really working with the existing property as it is today, so we could continue to utilize it as it's being done today.
It's my recollection, and we can check the records, but I think at the time, we previously approved site plans that included a lot of the changes to the traffic flow, minors they might have been. I thought there was a condition that if we got past certain thresholds, that we had to revisit that, but that's, we're not there yet.
Hundred percent accurate. But we are, we're getting there.
Yeah.
We could touch on that as well.
Okay.
That was one of the conditions of the approval. Once they hit a reoccupation of ninety thousand square feet, which, again, they're not at that point yet, but with the opening of White Plains Hospital, they will exceed that requirement. So there is a condition of the approval. Once that occupation, once they take occupancy, they're a post-occupancy traffic study will be prepared.
Okay. So that will happen with or without this application?
No, has nothing to do with it. But again, it's a comment that you brought up, and it's on their radar already, and it is something that would be conducted in the very near future.
Sure.
Good memory, Joe.
Okay. And again, just finishing off my last thought, again, no other site improvements are done, but there are a number of building facade improvements, which I know the project architect will be able to take you through as well. Next thing, want to just jump into the special permits. As we discussed, there's three separate special permits. Two of them, obviously, are very similar with the food uses on the property, and then the Equinox property, application is separate. We did receive a comment letter regarding some of the additional information that needs to be submitted as part of this, and we put together a response letter addressing each of those points. Happy to go through those tonight, but I just wanted to hit a couple of them from a high level that I think would be important to do. The first is the special permit criteria, the three general special permit criteria conditions that really apply to all of the ones that we're doing now. I don't need to go through each one because I think they're all so similar, and they kind of all are repetitive with each use that we're having. And just to summarize it, the three provisions, really, one is a harmony provision, the second one is an appropriate development and land use to adjacent properties, and then the third piece of that is operations-related. So the first one, from a harmony standpoint, again, you know, the site is an existing Lord, the former Lord &amp; Taylor location, it's an existing building that's being occupied. It's consistent with what's out there now. It's located along, you know, a corridor of commercial uses. So I think it's very easy to stand here and state that the uses that are being proposed, the building as it's situated, is in full harmony with the surrounding land uses. Appropriate development, again, same concept, same idea. This is reoccupation of an existing building. There's no changes that are being proposed to the site curbing and sidewalks and circulation on the property, and it doesn't discourage any other development from coming in and doing things along this corridor. So again, easy to stand up here and really say that it's consistent with, all three of the special permit applications meet that criteria. And then again, this application did go before the ARB at the May first meeting, where they received a positive recommendation for the facade improvements that were going to be constructed as part of this application. And then finally, the operations piece, I'm going to lean on the same thing. It's the existing building, existing operations in and around the building itself. There's no outdoor, outdoor operations associated with any of these uses. They're all contained within the building itself, and it doesn't have any direct line of sight to any of the residential uses that join this property. Everything's occupied within the existing building that they currently see today. I'm going to take just a few more minutes to jump into the special permit criteria for each of the individual ones. Again, the first one, the Tate Bakery use that was identified on the plan, obviously, this is a special permit use for a fast casual, quick casual restaurants under the town zoning law, and it occupies one of the space within the building itself. And again, just to buzz through the special permit criteria, not hitting each one, you know, we're going to utilize the existing parking and circulation aisles. We're not proposing any modifications there. The landscaping improvements were previously constructed and all of which is being maintained. We're not proposing removal of any of the landscaped areas or anything like that. There was an HVAC and ventilation plan for the rooftop equipment that's going to be located. That was a plan that was included in our application. Everything's contained. There's no above-ground, new above-ground infrastructure that's being proposed as part of the application. We do have the dumpster that will take care of the trash recycling and other requirements for the food uses themselves, and that would be located in the back portion of the building. And again, the architectural improvements were all reviewed by your ARB. I'm sure you'll go through them today, and you'll be pleasantly surprised, you'll like the proposed improvements as well, just to continue that facade of the building there adjacent to White Plains Hospital spot. And then lastly, there's no drive-throughs, no play areas, gaming areas, bar areas, or any other entertainment uses within either one of those special permit uses. So those were just the, just a rundown of the various general special permit criteria. For the other food use for Kava itself, it's the same response. I don't, you know, they're all identical from the landscaping, the parking, all of the special permit criteria, we check those boxes for each of those food uses itself. And then again, finally, the last one, the health and fitness facility, which falls under the indoor recreation and family facility provision under your code. That one has a shorter list of special permit criteria, but still, there's some specific ones that talk about the occupancy within the building and utilizing the existing parking. That's one of the overlapping and similar provisions. As we had stated before, there is a post-occupancy study that's going to be provided sooner rather than later with the occupation of the White Plains Hospital use. And then there's some additional improvements that's part of the original application that's still being constructed. There's some sidewalk improvements at the intersection of New Elmont Road and the signalized driveway. All of that is being done in accordance with the previous approval. Again, reiterating it again for this permit use here, the ARB made a positive recommendation for the improvements along the facade of this use as well. They do have an accessory use within the building, serving food and non-alcoholic beverages, but in accordance with your code, that's less than ten percent of the area, so that's fully compliant from that standpoint. We are greater than one hundred feet to any lot line. That was something, that was a comment that we received as well. We added those dimensions. We're actually over a hundred and fifty feet from any lot line on this property itself. The existing lighting will remain, all the lighting was actually upgraded on the site as part of the previous application as well. They redid all the lighting fixtures, all the light pole bases. All of that was done and obviously will remain the same. No noise, no outdoor lighting, there's no portion of this use that would be located on the outside, and there's no entertainment component to this use as well. That's really the overview. I see, I can see you coming out.
Yeah, maybe if we could just address one other thing. In addition to the traffic study, post-occupancy traffic study condition, there was a condition of the original approval that talks about sewage generation, and I know you submitted a report, and we have a memorandum from our consulting engineer, so maybe you could just talk about that for a minute.
Sure, you beat me to the punch. I didn't know if there was any questions regarding the special permit criteria and the things that we went through and the individual uses themselves.
Yeah, I do have.
Happy to answer that, but I can dive into the sewer uses as well, if you'd like.
Before we dive into the sewer. Just a very quick question, just to refresh my own recollection of what the rules are. As a general rule in this town, we don't really do fast casual, and we certainly don't do chains, but this Vernon Hills Shopping Center area?
Right. So there's a recent amendment to the zoning law a couple of years ago that has a very limited permission for Formula Fast Casual, not Formula Fast Food, but the Formula Fast Casual designation permitted in the DSC District only, which would be this property and the Vernon Hills Shopping Center. It's subject to a limitation that any one property can only have the lesser of three such tenants or seventy-five hundred square feet, whichever is less.
Got it. Which we comply with.
Right, and the building inspector determined that both of these uses were Formula Fast Casual.
Yeah, no, I'm quite certain it would have been flagged if it was a problem. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding what the requirements are.
Understood.
Thank you. Okay, back to the sewer now.
Any other, all right, diving in. As was indicated, there is a provision, we had to look back as this building started to be occupied, to look at the sewer generation calculations depending on the different uses that were on the property itself. So we did put together a memorandum that was included in the application that summarized, again, the various uses that are occupying the building, whether it's White Plains Hospital, Saks Off Fifth, and then obviously, the new tenants that are coming in here. So we did the calculations, we looked at the various numbers and the total projected flow associated with that, based on the memorandum that was submitted to you, is about thirty-six thousand gallons per day. There's been some new information that's been provided to us since we prepared this and submitted this, and had an opportunity to just discuss this briefly with your engineer as well. The one, the Health Club piece of it, is really based on the number of patrons per day, but we received some information as far as sewer flows from their existing location. As you know, this is a relocation from one portion of municipality to another, so we have water bills, and we were able to obtain some usage information. And the actual water usage associated with the use is significantly less than the paper calculation that we sometimes utilize. This is empirical data, it's a calculation, there's historic information that's being provided, and the New York State DEC, Department of Environmental Conservation, publishes these numbers, and that's typically what we lean on. The best thing to always utilize is real information. So now that we have that real information, we're able to adjust this flow a little bit to be more accurate and more consistent with what the actual sewage generation is expected to be for this property.
Okay, but is the Equinox that's envisioned for this location different size than?
It is. Great point.
Yep.
Beating me to the punch already, so. It's, the existing facility is smaller, hundred percent, but we can take that and then look at some comparative analysis. We know we're expecting an increase in membership, there's going to be things like that. Even if we provide a fifty percent additional sewage flow to it from what they're getting existing, it's still substantially less than what the calculation is here. So that's something we'll submit, we'll submit justification to the engineer so they can review that as well, and we'll come up with what we believe is a more accurate number, something that will reflect the actual flows associated with this use itself. Regardless, we are still above what is existing or what was contemplated for the original Lord &amp; Taylor use. So anything above that number, we have to mitigate in accordance with the previous resolution. So we'll work with your engineer, there'll be a number of I&amp;I improvements, infiltration and inflow improvements, meaning we'll look at your existing sewer system, and there might be some improvements that need to be either paid for or constructed as part of this application in the future.
Okay, yeah, I guess the large department store is not a big water user, is it?
It is, actually, there is significant usage within it, so that was the baseline of what we utilized, and there was some, you know, there was some significant flow because, keep in mind, you had the restaurant use as part of it as well, so all of that contributed to the actual flows. So we use that as the baseline, and then we're. to the actual flows. So we use that as the baseline, and then we're comparing it to the actual proposed uses that are, will hopefully occupy the building in the near future.
Okay, good.
Okay. That was well done. Thank you. We, we know what you're doing. Now, do you wanna go over, I think as far as site plan, we, we don't have any questions, right?
All right, great.
Kind of defined it. Do you gentlemen want to say anything, or it's okay with me? Thank you.
You've heard all my questions already.
We'll take you now a little bit through the architecture that was approved by the ARB. We have Michaela Giacomoza here from Highland Associates, our architectural team.
Thank you.
As it was so eloquently put from my team members, we've had some excellent recommendations from the ARB. In our, we have our overall plan showing where the entrances for each of the tenants would be. The, as Jerry had said, it would, the Equinox will be on the east side, back parking lot area, and Kava and Tate will be on the White Plains Road area. And then the elevations represent what is the intended use. We've already had most of these windows approved via the prior applications. For the Equinox side at the back of the space, we're gonna propose a new door opening location that matches the existing window locations, and with an additional window. And then we're gonna have it still match the existing materials, so it's not removing anything from the context of the building. Very similar to the front side, we'll be adding a window and a couple exits for Equinox. Again, matching that historical black window frames, and then-
Is Equinox going to have its ingress and egress exclusively on the east side of the building?
It's gonna have egress and, excuse me.
Ingress and egress.
Yes. It will have that on the backside, and then just egress on the front side.
Okay, back and front, back and front is what, east and west? The fr-, yeah. Which is which?
Uh, the east side is the backside, or that's how I've been calling it.
That's, okay. So the east, but, but that will be the main entrance?
Yes.
Okay. So for, for Equinox, it'll be the front. Gotcha.
You did.
Sorry, in relevance of White Plains Road, can you just explain? I pass by the place all the time, but in reality, so White Plains Road is which elevation?
The west elevation.
Yes.
And then you're saying Equinox is gonna be on the east, in the back?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
No problem. And then talking for the west elevation, which I've been calling the front, is gonna have our entrance for Williams Sonoma, Pottery Barn, Tate, and Kava. We're still, again, having the openings matched about the proportions that the windows currently are, which are the 15 feet, trying not to impose too much on the facade given the other tenants, but given that Williams Sonoma and Pottery Barn are a national tenant, they have a little bit different design modifications, but they're still matching similar colors to the existing facade, so that it's not too outstanding, but still maintains the integrity of-
Yeah, I will tell you the, I understand the, the purpose of giving us this sort of, you know, stark, it will look nicer with, with some good signage on it.
Yes.
Phil, can I add to that? So do you have any renderings of the, of the signage facing west or east for Equinox or, or any of the other, any other businesses? And will the Pottery Barn mirror the Pottery Barn that's in Vernon Hills, like something like that facade? Cause it does stick out quite a bit, honestly, like that, you know, compared to-
It'll be similar, but not as protruding as the one further down the road. But we do not have any signage just yet since we haven't been in front of the sign board review.
I'm sure it will be done tastefully.
Yes, absolutely.
They'd like them to be huge.
Yeah.
As I said, it will be tasteful.
Can you, before you continue, show us where each will be on the elevations?
Can you repeat that?
I'm sorry?
I, I couldn't hear you.
You show us where the, where the, each of the, each of the new tenants will be on those elevations?
Yeah, take the microphone with you.
Okay, so here would be the main entrance for Equinox. This would be a secondary, that mean, an egress door only. We're gonna have Kava right here, and then Tate, Pottery Barn, and then Williams Sonoma.
Got it. How much of the space on the east elevation will Equinox take up? How much of that left side?
The side?
Yes.
Uh, pretty much up to this portion of windows, and then the other portion is still designated for White Plains.
Got it.
Sax.
Sax, sorry.
Good.
And the windows, oh, sax or also-
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great. I don't have any questions.
No, you've answered. We know what's going where. Thank you.
Beautiful.
Are there, um-
That would conclude our, our direct presentation to you, but we do have representatives of the three tenants here. If you have any questions for them, they'd be happy to answer them for, that would be Equinox, Kava, and Tate.
I know they submitted something as part of the application. I think it was just like a blocking diagram, right?
Say that again.
I know they each submitted something as part of this application.
I'll, I'll let Mr.-
Yeah, so-
Yeah, yeah. It was just a blocking diagram, right, of the space, of the demise space?
It was a blocking diagram, yeah. It was a blocking diagram, and that question came back from Noel asking for more details. So we've actually got additional information on the layouts of those stores, showing where a seating is located, where the kitchen will be located, et cetera. And for, for all those tenants, as well as Equinox, which shows where their retail space is and where their juice bar is, so that we can show the sizes are all underneath and conforming. So we do have the more detailed plans-
With you today?
Yes.
You brought them. Might as well take a quick look, right?
Yeah, I, I think it'd be useful to have a short presentation from each-
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful if they could be formally submitted, you know, so that we could review them-
Yeah.
Before the conclusion of the hearing, but if you want to review them now, certainly.
And, and this is the kind of thing that people at home are gonna love watching. They're gonna love, wanting to see what's gonna come into their town, what, what new options they have to spend their money.
Okay, Tate first.
I'm Brendan Boyle, representing Tate Bakery and Cafe. So just a few comments about Tate. I figured we could introduce ourselves and then go on from there. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. And so Tate started as a Boston farmer's market in 2008, and since then, it's grown into a beloved neighborhood bakery brand across the Northeast. We serve scratch-made food, artisan pastries, nourishing meals, and approachable bold coffees. Every item's made fresh daily with an emphasis on quality craft and care. We view Tate as more than a place to eat. We view it as a welcoming gathering place, a spot where friends can meet, parents can stop by with kids, students can study, and neighbors can connect. Our cafes are really designed to feel warm and beautiful and inclusive, almost like a public living room. And we're very proud of the designs that we put together for these locations. We view the community of East, Eastchester as a natural fit for Tate. We're committed to being a good neighbor, supporting local hiring, and enhancing the neighborhood experience. And we really feel like we'll be a true amenity to the community, something residents will be proud of, and will come and see us often. With respect specifically to the layout, maybe I'll step up here. So you can ignore the outdoor patio. This is really just a representation of what a typical Tate lays out as. As you come in the, am I blocking a camera? Okay, good. As you come in the front door, you're greeted at our, what we call our main line, and this is where a guest can stop at our grab-and-go, see what we've got in there for beverages, and ready-made foods, view our presentation of our pastries here, and then work their way down the line to order at a POS station. You can also pick up drip coffee or have your pastries warmed and so forth here at this location. This represents our barista bar, so we have, you know, baristas serving high-quality coffee beverages made to order. And then surrounding the perimeter is typically banquet seating, bistro tables, chairs, and our kitchen will be located in the back. It's a full-service kitchen, you know, type one grease exhaust hood and chef-inspired bathrooms, office, and some back-of-house spaces as well. You know, we're decked out in a lot of tile and tend to, tend to have a nice gleaming classic interior.
I know it's in the application, but remind me again, what are, what are the hours of operation that you're expecting?
Sure. Yeah, we're seven days a week. Monday through Saturday is 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and Sunday's the reverse of that, 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Okay.
Great. Just, are you still on Tate? You're going to the next one? Is that still Tate, or is that the next one?
This is Kava.
Okay, just one second. So the signage, that's your, the, the-
Lettering.
Thank you. Yeah, that lettering is gonna be the, is gonna be the lettering that's gonna be on the sign when ultimately that's your, what's on the title block is the lettering that will remain-
Correct. That's an approximation of what our signage looks like.
Something like that. So that's a great idea. And how do you guys typically put signage or warnings just in general, now that I'm gonna hold you to it?
Our signage, what does it typically look like? So above the main entry, you'll see something like that. In this condition, a blade sign may or may not make sense, and then there'll be some understated window lettering that just says Tate Bakery and Cafe, and then on our doors, we'll have-
Yeah, it's- You guys have a, have an envisioned color scheme?
Black and white.
Black and white. Okay, that's what I thought I heard.
That's it.
Yep, perfect. Can't go wrong with that.
Okay, just curious. I think it's very inviting. I'm sure it's gonna get lots of people coming in and out.
We hope so.
Why is the kitchen so big?
Uh, well, it's, it, it's, believe it or not, we've got 15 employees working back there. 10 to 15 employees.
Really that much volume?
Everything's prepped in-house. Everything's made scratch, ready to order, like from, you know, we chop our own lettuce, we cut our own tomatoes, like all that stuff, so.
Okay, great. I'll be the first to go.
Awesome. Looking forward to it.
Yeah.
These are nice looking.
Yeah, it's curious. You're up. Yeah, whatever you bring up next will be fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This woman's got a Kava shirt. Yeah, that's a Kava branding. I like it.
I'm Molly Nostrend, Senior Design Manager of Kava. And our brand started in the DC metro area. Three best friends of Greek immigrant parents started off in the restaurant industry, and we grew from there. So our restaurant has a lot of fresh options, great for if you have specific dietary preferences, and a lot of good seasoning and Mediterranean flavors. Typically, our menu has grain bowls, salads, or pita wraps, as well as a children's menu option. And then we have fresh juices that are made in-house daily. I like to mix them, different flavors. Like the strawberry citrus, that's very good. And it is set up as fast casual, as you mentioned. Our dining room, we put a lot of care and attention into making it comfortable. We have a lot of booth seating, bench seating, and a lot of great tile, so.
Sure.
Are you envisioning sort of a mustard-colored Kava sign?
I mean, we do have pops of yellow.
Okay.
So our sign is similar to Tate. We would do a dark channel letter sign here to contrast the light facade, and then we would likely submit a, just like a wood eyebrow over that entrance, just to bring some warmth and character. So we've got this long narrow space here, our main entrance and some storefront. We have a lot of potted plants around the area, so anything green here. There's that beverage station with those fresh juices. And then along this run, we have a lot of two-top booth seating and then bench seating here. So guests will enter through here and queue up to place their order at this front line. Some bottled beverages here. And then on this side, we do have some open shelving for digital orders to go. As, and then on this run, it's whole kitchen equipment here, space to make those digital orders, a great view of the grill, a lot of chicken, honey harissa chicken, steak being grilled up on there. And then it's really just restrooms and back of house.
Hours of operation?
10:45 AM to 10:00 PM daily.
So you're gonna get the crowd leaving from-
Equinox.
Yeah.
It's true, yes.
Yeah.
And so, that's seven days a week?
I'm sorry, can you-
Seven days a week?
Yes, seven days a week, yes.
You're gonna have different hours on Sunday, or?
Nope, same hours every day, and we tend to do more of a lunch business than dinner, but we are also open for dinner.
Got it.
Great, thank you.
Great. So we have bakery items, we have grain bowls, and what else do we have?
Equinox.
Equinox. I think, right, you go to Equinox first, and then you work your way down the line? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Luba Santa Rosa, representing Equinox. Honor and pleasure to be here with you and take a little piece of your time to present our company, although I believe it's known to the town and its residents and businesses. Other than being a longstanding operator and a member of the local community since 1999, Equinox currently operates over 110 facilities, fitness clubs, and spas in the United States, Canada, and London. The first club opened in 1991, so over 36 years ago, and we are very excited about our, about our development plans. Looking at this new facility in Eastchester is one of our development opportunities that we were very excited about, specifically as we love this community and we want to be of more service, better service, learn from our mistakes, and, and be better operator and provider of high, high-level services. As to the-
Any chance of changing this from the Equinox Scarsdale store to the Eastchester store?
Well, Equinox will remain. You know, all of, all of our club beside Equinox, brand name has some sort of identity. In the city of New York, we go by, usually by streets, like Equinox, 50th Street, Equinox, 19th Street, or by local district name, Flatiron, Columbus Circle, Upper East Side, Upper West Side, et cetera. In other municipalities, again, it depends on how its names are popular with locals. So the existing facility, we call Equinox Scarsdale. I don't know if there is a new name for, for the new facility. Will it be Equinox Eastchester or Equinox Scarsdale to point to? It hasn't been, at least hasn't been made known to me, but, you know, eventually it will be.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kinda just teasing you, but, but I do know that, I do know that-
Everybody does that. I'm, I'm an easy target.
The, the Eastchester Fish Corme is located up the- The Eastchester Fish Corme is located up the street from where the present Equinox is, and where the present Equinox is, is certainly, I think, a Scarsdale PO, but it's definitely within the town of Eastchester, and you're moving that much closer to the heart of the town of Eastchester, so...
They're getting bigger and they're moving closer.
That's right. Now, I think it's a wonderful, my wife is a member, and she always complains about the parking, and also, it's very crowded during many of the hours in which she goes, and so, you know, having a larger facility with better parking, that's a win-win.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, our main priority and our focus is always our member experience, so we actually like that there are enforcement mechanism and various code regulations and requirements for parking. Even if they didn't exist, we still want our members to be comfortable, we don't want them to fight for parking space, we don't want them to stand in line to get into a parking lot, we want them to be in and out without any problem. So we are the most proponent, and we like to have more parking as it could be, you know, made available to our members. Sometimes, like, you're stuck to the site and it's difficult, but, you know, we have this opportunity, so hopefully it'll be solved.
Can you, before you start, can you just give me a rough idea of how much, how big this is relative to the existing?
How much what?
How, how many square feet, how many...
How big an expansion is it over the existing?
The existing facility is about 20,000 square feet, it's one level. The new location, at 750 White Plains Road, is about 38,000 square feet...
Almost double.
Almost double, mm-hmm, over two levels. The programming is almost identical, but obviously, it's more spacious, that the members are not gonna, like, fight for a locker room, or shower, or for, like, a treadmill, so there'll be a lot of circulation space, and I can walk you through. So the ground floor, the entrances, was said before, is from the east side, so a very nice and spacious reception with a lounge area, which we don't have at the existing facility, just because of the physical constraints, and then there'll be a pretty large, I call it monumental, but it's a...
Sorry, are we able to zoom in a little bit on that?
Let's carry back there.
Thanks, Carrie.
So this is the entrance, the main doors, in a reception area where members will be greeted and checked in. Behind, there are two locker rooms with wash facilities, et cetera. As a typical layout, we have our small accessory retail offerings, such as a juice bar, cafe, and pro shop selling sports apparel. They're very small, and surprisingly, the size of these accessory uses overall doesn't change with the size of the overall facility, so it could be a huge 50,000 square feet club, but the cafe, and then the retail shop will pretty much remain at the same size. It's between 300 and 500 square feet each, so it doesn't automatically expand as the facility, the fitness facility becomes larger, so these pretty much stay fixed size, regardless of the rest of the facility. So the retail shop is currently located here, at the left of the entrance, and the juice bar cafe is over here, where there's a lounge area, so people can have their drink, their coffee, their smoothie after the workout, and just relax before they go to their daily routine. Also, on the ground floor, there is a spa, or a typical spa, with treatment rooms for massages, and, you know, various other, you know, body relaxation services, and the sales offices for prospective members, where they could understand the services, how it worked, and potentially become our members. Again, as I mentioned, a large monumental open stair will connect the ground floor with the second floor, which is our main facility. And on that main floor, we'll have a large strength area for individual, you know, workout, strength training, selected rise to various machines, and cardio here for different cardio exercise. Mechanical room, back-of-the-house spaces, and I forgot to mention, the reason elevator connecting the ground floor and the second floor, but we think our members most likely are gonna use the stairs, it's more convenient. This is mainly for people that have some, you know, maybe difficulties walking up and down for various reasons. And in addition to individual exercise workout areas, we have our typical group fitness studios. Main studio, where we have, like, aerobic dance classes. Pilates studio, where people exercise on special Pilates machine with a trainer or Cycling studio for cycling classes on bicycles, and the yoga studio and bar for various yoga meditation-type of classes. The classes are led by instructors, so there's a group, and they're on a schedule basis, or there are schedules, and people are required to sign in ahead of time to make sure there's no overcrowding for each class of each type. And, you know, some members prefer to have particular instructors, so we do have instructors' names for each particular class, and their preference, some members have preference which instructors' class they prefer to take, so this gives them an opportunity to schedule exactly what they want, what type of class, and what type of instructor they would like to be interacted with.
What are the contemplated hours of operation? Are they gonna remain unchanged, or are they gonna be a little...
We would like to keep them the same, or maybe expand. The current hours of operation of the existing facility are Monday through Thursday from 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Friday is from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and Saturday, Sunday, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. We may stay a little bit late on weekdays, maybe up until 11 o'clock, like we do in our clubs, if there's a demand for, you know, late hour, but the usage during those hours is very, very small. But we do have members that like to have exercise, and we don't wanna take this opportunity away from them, so we try to serve them the best.
I think at this point, in the introductory comments, the applicant's attorney had indicated that this use will be sticking to the hours of operation that's in our special permit criteria for the time being, and perhaps will come back for a modification to those hours at some point in the future.
Okay.
Right, it seems like, yeah, very good. Each, each usage has different hours, is that right?
Yes, but our permit criteria only have applicable hours for, I believe, for the Health and Fitness Center.
Oh, I see, that's specific to Health and Fitness.
Correct, yeah.
Gotcha. Okay.
Do we have to, does the food service in the gym alter the calculation for the fast casual percentage, 'cause it's three locations that serve?
Yep, nope, the Health and Fitness Special Permit has a provision that allows up to 10% of the area to have that kind of use.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation.
Yep.
I'm gonna change my membership to here. I'm down the, across the street, in Scarsdale, at New York Sports, right? New York Sports is in Scarsdale, too. Okay, cool, thank you. Where's your lawyer? Where do we go from here? I think all the presentations are very helpful, thank you.
I think that concludes our presentation, Mr. Chairman. I guess since this is a public hearing, you may want to ask if there's anyone from the public here that needs to be heard.
Yeah, we haven't opened yet, so you can open the hearing.
No, I wanted to know if the board had any more comments or questions before I did that, guys? Go ahead.
So I just, real quick, have one question, and I apologize if this is not the proper time, or if this is even within the jurisdiction of your guys' planning, but I'm looking forward, obviously, to all the patrons, residents of Eastchester using these new businesses, and what I'm envisioning now is the way that the property stands, being that was formerly Lord &amp; Taylor's, one business, there is an entrance-exit that is on the Cardinal West side of the property, on White Plains Road. It is a little bit staggered from the traffic signal that's over by Trader Joe's. I guess what I'm envisioning is now that there is gonna be multiple business storefronts, there are the Williams Sonoma, Pottery Barn Kids, Kava, you know, the Equinox rear door, I guess, and...
This is, this is my, sorry.
Grab the mic.
Well, as well as the Tate Bakery, I guess my concern is that...
They go respond to it, but based on your original 2021 resolution, what's going to happen is, as soon as the hospital has a certificate of occupancy, a traffic study has to be done in the period 90 to 120 days after that, and submitted by 150 days in total to the town and its traffic consultants, and those types of issues will be reviewed once again at that particular time by your traffic engineer, and depending on the evaluation by your traffic consultants, it may or may not come back before this board to look at things like circulation, and the ingress and egress, and things of that nature.
Yeah, understood, and just to finish my point, I understand that that's part of the traffic, I guess, portion of it, that is, you know, pursuant to this, I guess, examination of the application right now as it stands. I guess my question more or less is, within the site plans, you were mentioning the islands and the landscaping, all that's to remain the same, are you guys even considering maybe shifting up the driveway? Like, does that fall into your jurisdiction, or does that kinda fall back into the traffic study, and just even using the traffic signal potentially on White Plains Road? And I understand White Plains Road is a state road, if I'm correct, so...
You're spot on.
I guess I just, I know it's, they're all adjacent to one another, so kinda where does that fall?
It's a great point, again, it's, that really does fall under that traffic study scope.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Because that traffic study will look at circulation. That was a comment that was specifically mentioned during that initial study.
In 2021.
That was prepared, oh, yeah.
I wasn't on the board then, so, don't hold me to it.
But that was a comment that was raised at that time, and again, based on the use of the property, depending on the different uses that were coming in, it was felt that it would be best looked at post-occupancy after that 90,000-square-foot mark, so those are the things that they will specifically be looking into.
Understood, thank you for clarifying.
When did we hit that point? As soon as the CVO is issued?
When White Plains Hospital receives their CVO, we exceed that 90,000-square-foot requirement.
Just, the board, just a parenthetical to this, in terms of the traffic enforcement in town, that area right there, that intersection, is a significant amount of the traffic violations that are written up, either people coming south and making left turns against the signs, coming north and making left turns against the signs, and there's a significant amount of people that go diagonally across the double-yellow line from Fresh Market into, and it's interesting because people, even though Lord &amp; Taylor's not there anymore, there's a lot, a large flow of traffic from one shopping center over to that northern portion of this lot, even though the space is relatively underused right now. So that's gonna have to be factored into that traffic study at some point in time, because not only do you have the initial medical usage that is gonna get the CVO, but now you have multiple tenants, so I'm assuming that's gonna have to be factored in as well.
That's interesting, I didn't know that. When they redo the traffic study, do they look at the violations?
That will be something that the traffic engineers will consider, right?
They do specifically look at that. That was one of the comments that was made, was the amount of the violations that occurred at that specific location.
As an additional parenthetical, I use my horn quite a bit in that particular area, because I can see that people are regularly violating the traffic laws there, other than myself.
Thank you, Phil.
Well, we do notice, too, that the town provides a police officer there on a regular basis, and they do catch a lot of people with that, so...
Do they?
Yeah, that's, Rob has to stay busy.
I'm the traffic prosecutor in town, so I'm the guy on every Tuesday morning that's punching bag for the public that come in.
So when I plead not guilty, I'm coming to see you?
And it's funny, but it is quite dangerous in that area, it, you know, it really, with people coming from all directions against the signage, it's a little bit like the Wild West, and I think that that's certainly something that's gonna have to be looked at and addressed.
Again, all valid points, we completely understand that that was the purpose of the traffic study. This board put that condition in with the foresight that they need, this needed to be addressed, so it will be.
Yeah. All of this is subject to that study.
Yeah, it's all contingent on that, but I don't assume it would.
And once we reach that threshold, the building department can't issue building permits or certificates of occupancy until the conditions are resolved, so there is an imperative to resolve any issues that may come up out of that study. Actually, the original resolution of approval from 2021 goes into a fair amount of detail about what will be studied, so I can put that onto the website if anybody, you know, just for any members of the public, or the board, or anybody who might wanna see what the scope of that study will include.
Yeah, I distinctly remember that, and I don't ordinarily remember everything from what we did in 2021, but I remember thinking at the time that to stage the analysis, the parking and traffic flow analysis, in that manner, made a lot of sense.
Sure.
So here we are.
Okay, any other questions, guys?
Yeah.
No, good. So then, let's see, I make...
Yeah, I think you probably wanna keep the hearing open on this, just so that we can collect and maybe give a bit more detailed review to the information that was just presented, perhaps we can advance just a little bit the manner in which the sewer issue is going to be addressed, and then reconvene in June to hopefully wrap up these applications.
Yeah, I'm not so sure you've been open to public hearing yet.
No, but do we wanna hear from Howard Sessions?
Who else? Oh.
Yeah, come on. We made Ken come out here, let's...
This is about the INI.
We made Rick come out here, sorry.
Thank you, Phil.
I'll make it quick, obviously, you saw the memo.
Yeah, you raised the other one.
The memo was very limited, the amount of site work, as was explained during the presentation, is very limited, you know, sidewalk work, trash enclosure proposed, but really nothing, there's no increase in impervious area, so there's no trigger for stormwater mitigation. As was discussed about the threshold for the sewer, sewerage, they'll hit that threshold as they reoccupy the building, which would trigger the requirement for the mitigation, which is a three-to-one mitigation, so for every gallon over the threshold, they have to mitigate threefold that. And the few comments that were included in the memo were kinda geared towards that, and I had a discussion with the project engineer, and most of that information was provided later on, so that, most of that will be addressed, all that will be addressed, or already has been addressed, so there's really no concerns on our end.
Great, I believe it's in good hands with you then.
Yeah, and Rick, any of the changes to the sidewalks, which sound like they're fairly minor, they're not gonna have any material effect on any of the water flow, are they?
They would not, no.
Okay.
Nope.
I'm becoming an expert on INI.
The exciting stuff, I love that.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna switch to tape then, so I make a motion to open the public hearing, application 2524, LT Eastchester.
Actually, are we doing all of them at once?
Yes.
We're gonna do all four at one time.
It's actually all, so if there's any comments about all four applications?
So we're opening the public hearing then on applications 23-24, 25-24, 25-28, 25-29, and 25-30, right?
Technically, you're correct, yes.
Second.
Yep, motion?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's do that over, I think we've really flubbed out.
So I make a motion to open this, this application, whichever numbers it is.
I'm gonna say the numbers, 25-24, 25-28, 25-29, and 25-30, all of which are LT Eastchester LLC applications.
All in favor? Aye, good.
I think, I think you, second.
Second.
Now we do all in favor.
Aye.
It's getting late. After all that, there's gotta be some comments.
We should've, we should've practiced.
Are there any comments from the public? No. Okay, so we're leaving open, you said?
Yes.
Cool, so what do we do now? We, so we're approving, or are they coming back, or...
Yeah, what I think shouldn't happen is the applicant can submit the information that they just informally presented this evening, we can advance the sewer information just a bit, and have resolutions prepared for the June meeting.
Okay, great.
You'll wanna keep the hearing open so you can receive that submission.
So in the memo you wrote to me, there were, for each of the occupants, you said there was stuff you wanted to take a look at, and I imagine you're gonna make sure that these were all reviewed.
Yes, and I think the applicant's engineer indicated that he has a point-by-point response being prepared, so we should have that for the next meeting.
So a little more review by the building department, and then we'll be ready, where are you, and then we'll be ready to go over this again before the summertime? Does that sound like a good direction? That's all we can do at this point? You're heading in the right direction now?
Thank you very much.
Okay, great, thank you.
And for any, there will be for the special permits... And, and for any, um, there will be, for the special permits, do they require the zoning board?
Uh, no variances are required at this point.
None? Okay, perfect.
Right, so we're gonna act on those when they come back?
Great.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Very excited that everything's coming to, uh, the shopping center. It's gonna be great to, very nice to see that everything is being filled up. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy Memorial Day.
Have a nice.
Um, no, but you could just send everything back with the submission, that would be great for June, yes, please.
Thank you. Good seeing you. Thank you. It's a happy Memorial Day. Yep, happy Memorial Day, everyone.
I'm, I'm on.
Uh, so the last application is twenty-five dash twenty-two, ten Hewitt Avenue.
I just remembered.
Happy Memorial Day. Doesn't sound right, does it? Happy Memorial Day weekend? I said saying happy Memorial Day weekend doesn't sound very good, just tell me from doing that.
Have a good, have a good.
Don't be happy, be.
Damo.
Be somber.
Just start. Uh, good evening, Board, Adama Rano from Community Designs and Engineering. Uh, we are back before you today for a, uh, extension approval, reappraisal of the three-lot subdivision at ten Hewitt Avenue. Um, so not to go over the entire year's sort of agenda, but just to quickly summarize, um, how we got here today. So after the approval last year, the applicant, um, did start the process. There's multiple items that they have to file with Westchester County as far as, the main thing is utility companies. We need will-to-serve letters from the water department, from Con Edison. So as you know from previous application, the water, uh, V O L did take a, uh, we were in the process with them back and forth, so they did take a few months in order to issue the will-to-serve letter. It was back in, uh, August, they finally got the letter for the utility, the will-to-serve for the new lots. Uh, then they were back and forth with the Con Edison company for the shut-offs for the, um, poolhouse and the garage, because those actually have utilities coming to them. There's a gas line going to the poolhouse. Uh, that being said, then in the fall, the, actually, the owner's in a trust, they passed away, so the, um, it's still in the same family, but it changed ownership, so we said, let's wait until the ownership completely changes and then we'll come back before you. So the only actual change in the entire application is the owner's name on the subdivision plot is now, um, reflected on that subdivision, so that when we file now with Con Edison, uh, file with Westchester County, it will, nothing will have to change on the plot. And actually, you know, cannot make this up, but I did receive a letter from the owner today, actually, May twenty-second, they got their final approval, I have the paper with me, from Con Edison, the approval for the shut-off for their demolition permit for the poolhouse. Um, so it's actually a good thing that we waited this long, because it probably would have extended another six months, because they literally just got it today.
Congratulations, because Con Ed is usually the longest item.
There you go. Well, what happened was, it was, then the ownership got changed, so they had to do a whole bunch of stuff, because they had to redo the new ownership to be able to cap it, just, not to get into it, but a bunch of stuff.
But you're there.
Big work. You know, you, when you submit to them, you wait a month to get back that you need some sort of other signature and their note, a bunch of nonsense stuff. But just, so then, just to quickly go over, I, I know we did receive that letter from a neighboring residence, um, just to go over what we sort of summarized at our original proposal of the subdivision, how we feel that is sort of conforming in the neighborhood. So right now, the existing site is, uh, it's a corner lot on Hewitt Avenue in Hathaway. It's a R-ten zoning district, so you need ten thousand square foot for each lot. Um, it is a, I would say, sort of out of character with the neighborhood, the way the lot is situated, because it's a, such a, an oversized lot, and it also has a very large, uh, right here, as you see, the proposed lot two, it's a very large two-car, uh, two-story, two-car garage, it's about two thousand square feet, that occupies this lot. So that will be removed and a new residence will take place, uh, on lot two. Then on lot one, again, there's a very large, oversized poolhouse and pool, that will be removed and basically, a new residence will occupy that proposed lot one. Uh, the good thing is, the only two additional curb cuts will be located on Hathaway Road, because the existing house that is situated there is not really a large house, it's sort of like a cape, um, but that'll remain. Uh, nothing is gonna be, you know, overzo, you know, everything is zoning compliant with these, so what we are proposing is to remove a lot of impervious surfaces on the existing site. So obviously, the pool, the poolhouse, the, um, garage, all of that will be removed, as well as the existing house that will remain, we're gonna remove part of the half-circle driveway and a little, um, sun, it's a, sort of like an atrium, like a glass atrium, so that, again, that house will be a hundred percent zoning compliant. Um, and then the good, again, what the good thing is, is that the, this house will occupy Hewitt Avenue, so the only really new residents will, are the two proposed lots that will have new curb cuts and will occupy Hathaway Road. So again, you know, uh, traffic will be very, very minimal, because there's only two additional houses that are being proposed. Uh, then we get into, so stormwater mitigation, obviously, the proposed two new lots will have a hundred percent stormwater mitigation for those when we come back with the new residents. They'll have all-new landscaping, obviously, we have to have a new landscaping plan done for the new houses, because they're oversized lots, so we're not really cramming new homes into these, uh, properties. So what is required is a ten thousand square foot lot, and all of the, both the proposed lots are fifteen thousand plus square feet, and then the existing home will occupy a property that's eighteen thousand. So they're above size for this area, and also even adjacent to this, on, on this side, there's, it's an R-seven-point-five district, so they're even smaller lot sizes. Um, and then with reflect to the, uh, impervious area, the increase is very minimal, because right now there is a lot of impervious surface, so essentially, the entire project, even though we're, uh, proposing two new dwellings in impervious area, if they were to ma, we're not there yet, but if they were to maximize all of the impervious surfaces, there's only a net increase by about fourteen hundred square feet. So very minimal, yet there'll be one hundred percent stormwater mitigation for all of the impervious surfaces that, you know, get proposed for those, uh, proposed lots. And lastly, as far as, you know, landscape and whatnot, yes, there'll be new landscaping, there's very minimal, no significant trees are gonna be removed. Um, I think there's like three ten-to-twelve-inch caliber trees that have to be removed for the new proposed dwellings. Some of the trees that are close to Hathaway Road, we sort of designed it so that those trees can remain and the curb cuts will be next to those trees, so we could salvage a lot of that landscaping along, um, Hathaway Road to sort of minimize the impact on the neighborhood. Um, and yeah, there's a whole bunch of properties, so there's nothing that's, you know, an issue with new stormwater and, and landscaping and all that stuff. But again, yeah, just same exact project, just, uh, an extension of that. The good thing is, yes, they are fully capable and ready to move forward, because they have all of those things in place.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So as you said, or as we all know, that this is really just an issue of reapproving the application that was approved previously.
Sure.
Right. Thank you for, um, addressing the woman's comments, I think that was helpful also. So then, um, are there any questions from us, guys, or it makes sense?
Um, yeah, since we've done this before, I'm, I'm still on board as I was, but just to, in fairness of the person who wrote the letter, um, it, it sounds like Adamo already answered the, some of the things he mentioned, like, you know, the, the trees and, and, and the, and the setting and, and, um, kind of keeping the look and feel of the neighborhood, which I'm sure, I'm sure it will. So, um, I, I just felt remiss if I didn't address that, you know, the letter, because I, I happen to agree with keeping the character of the neighborhood and the scenery and the trees and everything like that, so it sounds like there's very little being done to take away from that. Um, so just mentioning that on, on record.
Well, obviously, if you're gonna develop, if you're gonna build two more new homes, you are, um, by definition, losing open space. Uh, but, but I think we went through this before when we approved the subdivision in the first instance, and it does appear that every reasonable effort to mitigate the effect of this is being taken. That's, I think, the, what I recall.
Yeah, and they're not empty lots. As it stands, there's a poolhouse and a.
Yes.
Garage or something, so I'm sure they'll look prettier.
Exactly. And then, and there's still room for improvement. Again, this is just the beginning stages of it. Once we propose the houses, we'll start to look into, okay, you know, what also can be done? Let's plant some mature trees here, because we have to remove some, you know, that kind of thing, that you really look closely into those things, driveway impact, you know, let's not put them clo, you know, little things that we try to look at, so that we look at neighboring homes, what they look like and how they are, so that these homes are conforming to the other homes.
And as I'm sure you know, those lots will require site plan approval from your board.
That's right. And I think you've, you've also developed a, a, a strong reputation of playing well with others.
Sure.
Which is important.
Yeah, no, I, I don't.
You, you listen to the neighbors, you try not to.
Sure, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Be, be obnoxious and.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
That counts for something.
Totally.
I'm sure you're, you'll be respectful to the concerns of the surrounding community, as you always are.
Totally, yeah.
Thank you. So then, I make a motion to open the public hearing, application twenty-five dash twenty-two, ten Hewitt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments from the public?
Did you open it?
Yes.
Yes, yes, you're up.
Just now.
You have to come up, state your name, and, uh, make your comment, please.
My name is Richard Pregiato. I live at, at six Hewitt Avenue. I've been there for almost forty years. I can't even remember who the builder is, but my, 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 my house might have been a Bowman house. Whoever it is, it was a well-known builder in the area at the time. Two of the houses across from me have been totally redone really nicely. My house is about eighteen, my property is about a hundred and thirty-five by, by a hundred and thirty-five. Across is an island of grass, so next to my house is one other house, which is a large house, also a colonial house in field, and then across the street is this house, ten, ten, which was owned by the Outland apps in, in, in the old days. It's one house, there's a poolhouse. Did I hear a two-story poolhouse? I wasn't sure if I.
Garage.
A, a two-story garage?
Yeah.
What's, what's above the garage?
I think it's storage.
Okay. Uh, so that, um, not that I would have any area, and, and, and any, uh, objection, but, but it's one house and a poolhouse, and now it's gonna be t, t, two houses.
Three total.
Three houses and a poolhouse.
No, the poolhouse is being removed.
The poolhouse will be removed, so the, 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 two additional homes will be proposed.
Are you gonna have a pool on the property? Okay. Then I, okay. So, uh, not that I would have any objection at all, but it's a, the, the only, the only traffic in the area really is off of Nurelshell Road, which, which you can hear from my house, not, but it's Nurelshell Road. When you make that turn onto Hewitt, my house is the first house in the middle of the block, you make its turn on the corner and this house is right there. What kind of house, what, and, and incidentally, but my property is probably eighteen thousand square feet. These are not the large properties. So, and, and, I mean, if you feel it fits with the, the style of the area, I'm okay with that, and the only other, other, uh, aspect I, I would ask about is parking. I thought I heard a poolhouse, and I, I would ask about, you know, who, who they would have, have as, I mean, is it gonna be kids in and out of the pool all day, parking their cars on the street, or is it?
Well, I.
There are no poolhouses in, in, you know, on the street that I know of.
Just, just to clarify, I think they're eliminating the poolhouse and they're replacing it with the house.
There's a poolhouse, but no pool.
There will be no poolhouse.
There will be no poolhouse.
There will be no poolhouse.
All right.
Those concerns are not.
So the, the only question I would have is the style of, of, I mean, it's not an area that has ranch houses.
Well, I think, I think that's to be determined. This is just for.
Okay.
The.
Yeah.
First steps, and then later on, it'll be house-by-house review, and amongst the boards, it'll be enforced to try to keep it to the relevance of the area.
So when I heard that the properties are large properties, I, you know, I, that, I don't argue with that, but they're not large properties. They're, they're probably as small as any property in that area.
Uh, we could ask the architect, but.
I'm sorry?
I say we definitely can ask the architect on this, on, is that, um, is the lot size about the same as?
They, the current, my land is eighteen thousand, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's, I think it's a question.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so they're relatively bigger than what's allowed in the zoning, so ten thousand square foot is allowed. There are some corner lots.
Ten thousand is, is about how much of an acre?
A hundred by hu.
So mine is, mine's a hundred and thirty-five by a hundred and thirty-five.
Almost half an acre, it's forty-three thousand square feet, it's an eight, forty-three, five, sixty. So they're oversized with respect to your required ten thousand square foot, these are around fifteen thousand square foot property sizes.
Okay.
The homes won't be, you know, ginormous of any, you know, everything has to be zoning compliant, um, so it'll be very much in the character, obviously, the style of the homes will have to come back and come back to, actually, the architecture board first, then this board, to make sure that the style and aesthetics and zoning of the homes.
And you're the builder?
No, he's the architect. Can we have the conversation turned around here? But, I mean, I think we, we understand your concerns and he's helping you understand that we're, it is gonna be addressed. You wanna know what's gonna go there, we don't know yet. Right now, we're just drawing lines on paper, showing what the lots are gonna look like. The next step is to do site plan approval, in which case, we know what the house looks like, how it's gonna be seen from the street, how, all the details, that's the next step.
I think that, I think that's the next, that's the item that you're gonna wanna be interested in, is the next step.
So come back. Are you gonna be back, uh, when do you think you're gonna be back?
Um, probably till, a lot after the summer.
The fall, yeah.
After the summer. So this is all gonna get put on hold until the fall?
So the, 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 the only other question I have is the entrances to the two homes in the areas that you're building on Hathaway, is on, obviously, on Hathaway.
Exactly. The existing house will remain.
Will, um, um, remain on you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a nice evening. So I make a motion to close the public hearing, application twenty-five, twenty-two, ten Hewitt.
Second. Second.
All in favor? So I make a motion to... What are the conditions of the previous plot approval?
So the conditions were, let's see, do I have the resolution with me?
I mean, should we state them for the record, or?
Sure.
Are they in the sentence?
What was the engineering comments, you know, the removal of all?
Do you recall? I, I don't really know.
It was, well, the removal of those items have to be performed before you could sign the plot. Obviously, the engineer comments were satisfied, but part of the conditions were the removal of the impervious areas, the pool house, the garage. And I forget exactly.
Yeah, once again, I'm almost there. Okay, so the, the conditions of the original approval were that prior to the signature on the plat, the applicant addressed all of KSCJ's comments, mostly pertaining to stormwater, that are typical condition, that the approval of the subdivision does not grant site plan approval for the two lots, and that site plan approval will be required, and the imposition of the recreation fee for the two new created lots.
Right. Do we do the rec fee thing, or?
The rec fee, yes. That was the third condition of the original approval. And so probably what you want to do is just reissue that exact approval.
Okay, cool. So then, so then I make a motion to approve application 2522, 10 Hewitt subdivision, based on the project plans and findings as provided in the resolution issued for this project on March 21st, 2024. That was application 2402. And subject, subject to the conditions which were just read by Noel upon that approval. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. I think you're done. Great. Have a nice evening.
Thanks, Adama.
So, thank you. Have a nice Memorial Day. The only other things on the agenda that we have to go through are more procedural. On application 25-18 to 10 Marble Dell Road subdivision, the applicant has not made a submission for review at this meeting. The only action we can take right now is to declare itself lead agency for the secret review of this action, which I will do now. So I make a motion to declare the planning board lead agency for the secret review of this action, of this action.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The last one we're going to clear from the agenda is Sal's Market and Pizzeria. He's been non-responsive. So, and that's application 23-15. Sal's Market and Pizzeria, 75 White Plains Road, since it has been a year, since the application was reviewed, we are going to make a resolution asking that planning staff send an applicant a letter, providing the applicant must make a substantive submission for the review at the June meeting, or at that meeting, the board will consider a resolution denying the application without prejudice to refile it for failure to pursue it. What does that mean? I'm making, I'm going to recommend or ask that the planning staff prepare that letter to be read at the June meeting as stated prior. That's the motion I just made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? That was all in favor. Great. So then I'll make another motion to close the, to close the town of Eastchester Planning Board meeting of Thursday, May 22nd, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.